Okay, work session two, Rob Ellis, Horizontal Land Partners, Miami, Florida. We are showing that you cannot buy land in Miami for, you cannot buy it where I'm at. And we'll just go here. Let's just go Miami, we'll go by. We're just doing, it's important that you're always thinking about land, always looking at land prices. Let's just go to 50 acres. I don't even know if there will be 50 acres for sale. You're seeing that it's $14 million. There you go. Those are your options. Middle of the Everglades. Or unincorporated areas outside of the building line. Not interested. So we look at the entire state. And we're looking for land under $1 million. Really, I like to look a little bit closer to like 800. 20,000 an acre. And what we're looking for is non-homestead. Definitely, non-agricultural within city limits. We're not picky on where to go. Maybe we can come under this a little bit. We'll probably drop this to we'll go 20,000 or 20. And we'll drop this down. We really want, and we'll keep it 800. We really want more land than that, but for single land tracks. We will look at it. Now, we want to be closer to job centers and where there's infrastructure as well. Where there's been expansions from like out here. And where it's adjacent to other city limits. Like obviously you can't do anything with that, right? Unless he brought, that is substantial bring up. Let's see here. This is one we saw yesterday. You see how it's next to development? And it's in the right county. So I like to look a little bit more in here. We have to look at the overlays. And access. Countryside. Sometimes we're looking for, I don't know if we can filter by days on market, but I like to look at stuff that's been on for a long time. Let's see here. The problem with a lot of these is there's literally no roads to get there. Let's look at this one. Easement in place. See, that's the kind of, you have to be a little bit, we don't have to be this desperate yet. Land isn't that hard to find. But as you can see, you have some HCA like that. So this is the kind of stuff we're looking to. And a lot of the times utilities are going to be along infrastructure. So we really want to be on main roads with some of these things, with some of these road, these listings like this. When it's split up, it doesn't help us. We need one contiguous land track. You see how this was developed? It's a little bit too small and a little bit too much. You can't put a, you can't chop a land, a piece of land in half. That will kill a deal. We just had a railroad, we just had an electrical easement running straight through a property that we had put under contract. And, but they're willing to move it, I think. We have to look a little bit further, but. So we're still looking. Stuff like this is not going to have any utilities. Because if it had utilities, they would put it in there. They would put it in the description, I'm sure. They're not. If your agent came and put that in there, you probably shouldn't be listening with them. So we're just looking along here. Again, we like stuff with direct access. Easement. But you haven't seen that development yet. You see that? So they have, this is how they chopped it up. And again, we'll take some, but it needs to have a higher traffic count. A lot of the times these little stuff like this isn't going to happen. So we're going to pass on that one. And 8762. Let's see here. Small city known for its serene, prime location, future growth, zoning, farming, livestock, or agricultural. So we're also looking for buy right because we have 600 different sites that we can pick from in all of Florida. So we're not picky. We're just looking at corridor growth. This one doesn't look too bad. So we'll pull this up on Google Earth. And see what's around. This is Florida. A lot of the times, some of the central Florida stuff is super dry. There's not wetlands issues. Even if there are, it's not too bad. Almost any site that you pick is going to have that. So we're looking at the density blends, right? And if it's not, a lot of times when you get out like over here, you're going to see denser housing like this. Smaller lots. When you get over here, I'm not seeing any residential development. Not like that. Normally, a lot of these are have. So while it is growing, it doesn't have what we're looking for. Not yet. So we'll keep looking. In the city, owner finance in the city, buildable, clear lot, confined, 28, big frontage. Owner finance. It's now or never. Well, we'll take a look. Let's see what's around there. And if there's been residential development, he might be right. It might be a million dollar piece of land, but they didn't spend the $500,000 to get it there. Yes, this could be it right here. This could be our next little site. We love these little towns in Polk County. We're looking for any residential development. You've got it right here off of this road. We're looking for any other, you see this right here? That's been cleared for residential development. We've got lots of commercial, which means there's access, there's normal things like that. So look, you got other residential development over here, manufactured homes. And now we just need to check the zoning. And if this is good, this is the kind of Polk County stuff that we like. There's more people moving to Polk County than one, than, it's top five in the country. One in 10 people, one in 11 people in Florida moved to Polk County that move here every year. How crazy? One of them has to buy my house or our land or one of our builder's lands. So now there may be a reason that there hasn't been residential development on this side. But you can see how this has also all been cleared as well. And so same with this one. So this looks like an amazing site. The way it's worded, it makes it sound like it's not someone that we would be able to work with. 22 isn't that big? And it's been on the market for a year. That's a great sign. We're looking at net usable and we need to make it, we need to be able to make at least. Oh, it's only been six days on the market. Owner provides the opportunity. Now, if these are land banking people, it might be a good little opportunity for us to work with them. So we're going to go to Polk County Auditor. And I think one of the things that we need to do in our future LOIs is describe the difference between an offer and an option. And before we get into all this, simple difference for option compared to purchase contract or offer for an agent. This is, I think, going to become part of our offer. It's to help sellers understand what we are doing. Due diligence for our land fund. Here we go. Simple seller, understanding our approach, an option versus a purchase contract. When working with our land fund, we often use something called an option to purchase agreement instead of a traditional purchase contract. Here's what that means. Option agreement gives us the exclusive right, but not the obligation to buy your land within a set time period. We pay you a non-refundable option fee for that right. During this time, we conduct due diligence, including engineering, zoning feasibility, builder pre-marketing to confirm that the land meets our investment criteria. If everything checks out, we proceed to close. If not, we walk away without putting you at risk or tying you up long term. It's a standard agreement in a purchase contract where both parties are committed to closing, usually after a short inspection period. If issues come up later, title zoning and infrastructure, the deal could fall through or require negotiation. Why we use an option? Because we're investing significant time and money upfront and due diligence, surveys, engineering, builder commitments. We use the option structure to de-risk the process for both sides. You're compensated early and retain certainty, willing to move forward if we can make the project successful. It's a standard practice for institutional land buyers. And we get the question, can I keep it on the market? Which I think the answer is yes. Technically, they can continue to market it as active. There is just an option on it. Let's see here. This is how you can clearly, yes, during the option, you retain ownership, you can continue to market the property as active. The option agreement simply gives our land fund the exclusive right to buy the land within a defined period. It doesn't transfer title or prevent you from receiving interest from other parties. However, because it is exclusive, you can't sell or contract the land with another buyer during that period. Think of it like a hold that protects our interest and due diligence while giving you upfront compensation and full transparency throughout. That's the difference. So those are the two things. Do you want to tie your land up for a year and receive options? It's not really our, it doesn't really matter to us. There's lots of land. And if someone doesn't want to, there will be more. And this is what we consider something that we want to start including because a lot of the sellers that we're working with, the seller that I just made an offer on yesterday is 89 years old. And she wants to cash out and she had a cash offer for $200,000 less than ours. I can't, that's your motivation for selling your land. That has nothing to do with us. These are our terms and we are very disciplined. If you don't want to abide by these, then we'll always be here and we'll always buy your land. Go work it out with that guy. If he transfers it out, if not, you have an interested party. So the more that we get our name out there, the better that it is and easier that it is to work with us. Yeah, of course, everyone wants to sell, but there's been land on the market for three years sometimes. And it takes a lot of due diligence to get that land cleared, five, 10 hours a day for a month, just to get through that initial concept. Once we have a really good concept, it moves pretty quick. So we're checking zoning on this one. We're checking the overlay. Polk County, Florida. Property search. 356 Lake Millsite. All right, this might be it. It's the same parcel. You know, oh, there we go. So you really want to avoid shared driveway agreements and things that have already been platted. You need unplatted land? Unincorporated, not in a subdivision? And what is the classification? I think this has already been platted. Let's look. We're going to say, is this unplatted land? Now that is one acre and where it must be a larger land track. It must be this big one right next to it. So let's go to this other one. Paula Davis. I think it's right next to it. Very strange. Amanda, it must be that one. But I'm not seeing, and we don't see this. When I look at this overall, does it give me a good gut feeling? For a residential subdivision? Not really. Subdivisions are boring. They're typically around other things. They are. Does it get me excited? Not really. If you look over here, you see this is Main and Main. This is off a main road, right? This is off a main road. These aren't really tucked behind weird little things like, you don't see them over here, right? You see them on main traffic ways and things like that. So I don't think that that's going to be one that we focus in. Let's keep looking. Not a good site. Nope, neither of those are good. Now this one, on the other hand, is interesting. Let's see how long it's been on the market. Oh yeah, we're good. Since August of last year, so six or eight months. No one's really looking at this one. And we're just trying to get started in Florida. We just need one good site. You know, we're not picky. I worked through all of them. It's just time. All right, let's go here. Yes, this is a great sign. There is a high school. Great, 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 great sign. It's in an overlay, an R3 overlay, which is great. And it's got, that means that it's going to be plenty of utility runs around here. So we're going to go look at the Waachula. 4900. Great. It's in central Florida and it's adjacent to a lot of the other ones. Okay. And within the city, what is the R3 zoning development standards? And minimum lot size, sizes? R3, that's great. Where is their future use overlay? Now we need to see where we're at here. So we'll look at the location on a map. And we have to zoom out a little bit here. But it's great to be by a high school. And so we're kind of south off of 17 over and we're right here on Altman. And what I think this means is Waachula's city boundary. It might be the county. It might be a county plat. But it has city utilities. If we are outside the future land use and city boundaries, do I need to incorporate in or no? Go to annex and I need to. Is it required? What is Hardy High School? It's in the same non-future use. Maybe it's a village or an extension. Okay, so we're looking at the county's overlay map. How do I find? The water and sewer overlay? We're looking for a map. We wanna see if there's water and sewer. And click on utilities, Hardy County. Oh, we wanted to see. Well, we can check zoning. So this is a great example of. Um. Where's Altman? Of course they wanna see housing by the school. There you go. Bop. Owned by higher development, now why would they sell it? It's TCN. Here's the parcel. So now we go to Hardy County. Town center has been rezoning, that's a higher density. Is currently AR. R3 but has TCN overlay at the county level. So let's see what it says here. That would be city utilities, but if there is county utilities, we don't need to annex. What are the development standards for TCN? Alright, let's check it out. Land development code. No problem. Six hundred pages, who wants to read that? That's four units an acre, that's a hundred and twenty houses. If we do single family detached. It'll probably be about ninety. A hundred and four. What blended density am I hitting? This is by right development, so we are not. We can put the burden on the seller and just say, we do single family detached. Met buildable. If we had perfect yield. Now there's nothing wrong with this um development standard and having this kinds of density. A lot of the times, it can be a strategy. Um, let's pull up the yield here. We're gonna say. We think. SFR detached is premium. And by right without annexation. And develop to development standards. What is my? Basis per lot? On this example. Here is the listing. And that's exactly what we're looking at. So no annexation, no PUD, we just need to look at the county maps. And then we can confirm that this is what we want. So, we just need. Um, and this is the whole point, you see how much, even for me. Uh, and even for this, it's extremely complex. And that's what gets in the way of a lot of these developments, it's uh the ability to. So this is gonna be utility network. We're looking on Altman, I'm guessing they wouldn't build a high school. Without. I could be wrong though. So we're looking at. Nine-two-one Altman. I think this is the wrong county. Oh, here we go. Water service. WS. Sanitary sewer service. Now, what I would say is that there's a reason that Hardy came around because it probably does have utilities. And um. I think you would need to annex in because they probably tapped it. Let's look here. If you were gonna do this. And so it looks like you would have to bring this down. If you wanted to annex in. And tap into the utilities to this site right here. A1 need to be annexed into the town in order to receive public utilities. Once annexed, residential zoning and land use adjacent to the property at Altman Road. Public sewer is only sixteen hundred feet away. Citrus Grove, potential for residential development. No longer advertised, now. If you look at this project here, let's see if we can find what happened to it. Forty-six. Forty six uplands and fourteen of lower lands TCN same thing annexation. So you see the same thing. Let's look at where was that on the map? If you look at our map. That. Let's see where that was. It says it was near Main Street. Around here. So it may have been one of these annexes. But that is basically. So if we wanna look at, we're out here. And if you wanna try to tap into. City utilities, you're gonna have one mile. Six thousand feet to run utilities. And that's your only way of getting there. Either way, and if you're gonna bring them all all there, you might be able to work with the municipality, but. So. Um. That's what we're looking at. How do we? It looks like they tagged in. I don't know exactly where that was. But that's the idea. I think you could also come down this way. But it's gonna be longer to get there. Let's see here. Pause to run. Utilities and annex. Utilities would be running. One point two miles for sewer and water extension. We would need to annex. If it's justified, I think we would need to double the density. I think we would also need to upzone. To RM twelve and push the density. In a PUD. To max detached permissible. Which would be. Fifty by seventy foot lots. Which is thirty five hundred with alley access. And detached. Barrages behind. If we do fifty by seventy, that fits. Or I think it'd probably be better to do forty by. One thirty is probably better. For a thirty foot wide product. Let's do all detached. Minimum size lots. So what would that yield? On this site. We would need. What kind of zoning when we annexed? With a PUD. So this is how you make this site maximum detached yield. Upzoning to RM twelve. Fifty two hundred is what's accepted. We would probably do. That's exactly what we need. With detached lots, it would be different. I think it would be one hundred and eighty eight. That's the smallest we could do. So we would need to. Explore. The annexation. Utility extension. PUD upzone. To RM twelve. Is that accepted in this area? And that would make utilities available to the high school as well. We may explore TIF. Or public extension. As well. What incentives would there be to run it on the same? Street as the high school? Okay, so I want to write an option contract that takes. Twelve months. And the first ninety days is exploratory. It describes. This pathway to the owner. The listing info is here. So in this, we, I don't think we would need a PUD. I think it would be an annexation. But it might be a PUD. I think PUDs are typically a little bit more flexible within a PUD. We can have varying. We can have varying um, density patterns and then we just need to get someone involved. We would really want multi-family as well. But detached. That's as small as we can get lots with a five foot side yard. Okay, so. That's gonna be it. And I think that. Please make sure to bring. In the listing agents. Info. And then we're just gonna attach an example of an LOI that we wrote yesterday. Here is an LOI I wrote yesterday and I want to follow the same template. Add in the. We want fifteen months, twenty five hundred per quarter. After the first ninety day due diligence. Tie up. We will do one thousand. Non-refundable for that. So to sign our contract. We'll give him a thousand dollars. And that is how we do a pathway. Want to extend four quarters. Since it's so complex. To get this one to work, but this is how you do it. Add her info in and make this as lengthy as possible and institutional. And make sure it has the addendum that. Breaks out the pathway to get this site. We would probably allow. A PUD and various. Developments, development densities. But RM twelve. And under would be good. It has TCN overlay. So we could talk. About multi-family. To push the density and site value if it becomes cost prohibitive. Is. RM twenty four available as well in this municipality? Maybe we explore. Both. In the public town hall about utilities. To get to this area. I think Main Street has. Utilities. Or seventeen. Both are approximately. One to two miles from the site. Add all of that in the. Option contract. Now, this is a developer that looks like it bought it. And so they might even look at us and say, okay, maybe we should work on something together. They have a lot of money tied up. It's been on the market for quite some time. After we make an initial, this is our first look at. Apply for RM twelve with a PUD, explore potential for RM twenty four, if the infrastructure for upward flexibility. Explore TIF, CRAs and other types of things. Okay, so this is gonna be our last draft. We need to find the seller's info, which I think we had up on Hardy County. You see some of these. R one, R one. And we wanna try to bring this out here because all of this. Can be developed. There's a lot of good land that can be developed out here. And again, we're just picking one random site. That's along US seventeen, but it's seeing a lot of growth. And um, you see this pretty commonly. I think you'd want a larger one. You'd wanna explore a larger site, but it doesn't hurt because this is the one that's on the market right now. So if we look at Maine, here's R two. Watch your left future news overlay. And you see how out Main Street, somebody else brought all this in here and we're down here on Altman. You see that? So we're saying that we could bring it this way. And down. I think we're like right around here, or we can bring it down from Main Street. Right here. So we're looking at this as the most viable pathway, utility extensions from here. Like they did over here. You see how they brought that out and ran it up there? And that's what we're looking to do as well. If we bring those utilities, there might be a tip for other opportunity to bring out. Our larger development and then we would just need to talk to the people that would look at it. So let's see here. We're looking for the. Very common pathway. I'm sure this land is dry. They built a high school on it, you know? Um. And we wanna see the. And it doesn't matter. If they don't take our offer, we try. There'll be more land in Hardy. When they sit around for the next year. Um, they can always call us back. they can always call us back. We're converting a, there's a co-broke offer. We wanna convert it to a we wanna clarify that we definitely expressly declines representation by any cooperating broker and wishes to remain unrepresented for the duration of the option and any subsequent by request that in the event of a cooperating broker fee or buyer site is offered under the listing agreement, such fee shall be instead paid at closing as an acquisition fee directly to the buyer affiliated land fund as compensation for origination entitlement in that. Development pathway addendum. It talks about this annexation petition, PUD overlay, six dwelling units an acre. If it's, if it becomes pro- prohibitive. And then add the seller's info. Name ETC or name of them and the addendum for the title company we had in the original. So it's still missing something here. Add the full agreement here. So what we're doing is we've gone in, found a site, looked at the zoning. We're doing an option to purchase. We've looked at the pathways, thirty acres is small, but it's what we're playing in right now. This looks like a lot better land. Okay. We'll leave it open for a week. And then we always look at an overall look at the option agreement. It's super clear. It clarifies brokers. It clarifies our pathway. We're definitely not gonna put a summary. We'll do that secondary and we're not gonna do the other one. Can you add all that in? Can you give me the final institutional option contract in full? So what we're gonna do is take that in there. We attach our two pager and my resume. We normally text them. And then the only other thing we wanna add is the difference here. I'll add this as an addendum too. And you add this as an addendum. And you add this in some kind of other method. Or some kind of other bullet point to help. Sometimes it's over some of the realtors or sellers heads. So we're gonna talk about the difference between a purchase contract. Exhibit B. We operate our acquisition minimizing risk and ensuring likelihood. Here's the difference. Twelve to fifteen months, non-refundables to do this, traditional purchase contract, why we use it. Yes, you can continue to operate it, but you not may, you may not sell that. They can also secure a backup or secondary option. But can't take our place. Then you update the full version and put it here with that as well. Then I can copy paste. So as we get better, we get some of the same questions. What is this? Who are you guys? What's the structure? And that's the whole point of this. Work session, right? So depending on the we wanna make sure the proof of funds. You have the clause about proof of funds in the final nine months within the SPV or once the contract is executed, it would be explicitly agreed. That is when we provide proof of funds. I would explain that it's a newly capitalized single purpose entity and that is why we put it that way. Such documentation may be issued in the name. We need to get an EIN, we need to get a bank account. We need to fund it with the purchase amount and then provide proof of funds prior to execution of the option. And then we will execute. So I think this would be worded more as a capitalization strategy. We are a intermediary. Update it and put the full draft. Don't truncate any pieces. So we're looking at this as a we're an intermediary SPV and capitalized that we're gonna provide this. When we go to do it, we create a new entity, a new SPV. We don't buy it in our name or in our other development's name. It gives us the most flexibility. And it's how Walt Disney bought a bunch of land. I don't think we need a confidentiality clause because what we do is already so public. You can't convince people. They either have to wanna sell or not. If they wanna sell under our terms, they can. This is an origination fee that we negotiate directly with the sellers. So this is a copy of what we're gonna offer here. Our names, everything like that and we're gonna call this nine two one Altman Road Option to Purchase. We download it. We make a new loop on dot loop and we're gonna submit this. So that's what it looks like in a work session. I think that was ninety minutes. We went out, found a pathway, looked at the zoning, we looked at the annexation, we looked at the structures. It's not by right, but we're tying up control of sites. There's companies tying up sites for even less. It's just how it works. We can't be picky. We'll go anywhere in Florida. It's the number one net migration and it's everywhere. When I talk to people, everybody's wanting to come down here and work. It doesn't matter where they're at. It's housing. So thanks for watching.